Paul, would you like to start off with us? Want to do that? Want to start off with the National Box. Bring the guys up front. Guys, DPW guys are here. We have our proclamation. You guys, this is the one, right? This is it, right? You guys want to come up front? Come on up. You guys did this. You guys have made this town what it is with great foresight from us.
Have a seat right up here.
Yes, you have a seat. And whoever is the next senior person.
That was quick, huh? So, gentlemen, there's a proclamation that's going to read to us.
All right, everybody buckle in. This is going to take a minute. Town of Burlington Board of Selectmen Proclamation. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, buildings, cemeteries, transportation and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works employees, and whereas the efficiency of the quality, I'm sorry, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, we the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Burlington do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 to 25, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the Town of Burlington. And we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions with which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life, given under our hand this 22nd day of April, 2019.
Before you, before you, guys, before you come up, I think a couple of guys might want to say something. Then we're going to pass that out. We'll do that way there, that way there, not coming up and down twice. It's good exercise. You read that, so why don't you start?
Yeah, sure. So, I mean, just quickly, from me to all of you, I mean, you know, I don't think that words can truly thank you all for everything you do on a day-to-day basis to make Burlington the town that it is. You know, every, every community has an infrastructure that I think only goes notice when things go wrong. And I think that it's the efforts of our Department of Public Works that ensures that Burlington feels as seamless a community as humanly possible. And so, for me personally, to all of you, I thank you for everything you do for our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you know what? I know every year we, we read the proclamation and we have the guys here, and I'm just going to repeat what I've said in previous years. Like the proclamation says, I mean, folks don't really know what you, men and women, do on a daily basis. You are out there in the middle of the night, you're out there in some less than ideal conditions. I've seen, you know, some of you guys waist-deep in water in January at all hours of the night until the job gets done. And those are things that the public doesn't see. You're not on the front page of the newspaper all the time for these things, and so I think this is a great opportunity that we have you in and point out some of those things that you do day in and day out. And from me to you, as Nick says, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, I want to thank you as well. As the two previous speakers mentioned, people, the residents sometimes don't realize everything you do. You know, when you think of public employees, public safety, which I believe you guys are part of, they think of the policemen and the firemen because they have TV shows. They haven't made a TV show about DPW workers that I'm aware of yet, but I'm sure we'll have to cast someone special for Richie. But, no, they don't realize that it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. At night, holidays, you guys are out there. It's snow, it's snows on Christmas, you're out there. So, thank you, and I just hope people, you know, appreciate you as much as I know we do. Thank you.
Yeah, I've had the chance to work with a couple of you. Richie and I have worked well together over the years, and it's been a blessing to have someone like Rich in the positions that he has been with the town. And, yeah, I mean, when you're, when you're one of the last people to speak, everybody has said, you know, what you were going to say. I do get to say there's one other person there that I, that I've worked with, and we were on the same team in a wiffle ball contest, so that, that was an important part of our relationship. But, John, before they sit down or disappear, for the sake of the folks who are, are watching, would you identify everybody? Or Rich, let Rich do it. Yeah, just tell everybody who.
Just state your names.
Rich Reed, Buildings and Cemeteries.
Okay.
John Sanchez, the superintendent.
So, we do have, you know, from left to right, we have Brian from our Central Maintenance Department, Nicole, who is on Buildings and Cemeteries, Leo Fernandez, who is also Central Maintenance, we have Luke from Central Maintenance as well, Bill from Buildings and Cemeteries, electrician, Frank Anderson, does a little bit of everything, but mostly facilities lately, and you know Rich Reed as well. And I know that we haven't gone through all this, but I have the mic and I just can't help that the mic is here. So, I do want to say just, just a couple of words as far as how we believe that people do feel about us. And that was really represented last week when town meeting actually took a vote to provide DPW with a new facility, and it was a truly overwhelming vote of support to get the facility constructed for our departments. So, we do feel that, that they understand what we do, and, and that really has us motivated into the future. And I do personally, as well as members of the department, thank all of the residents as well, town meeting members, for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go anywhere.
I'm actually in one of the lucky positions that I get to see and hear of all the great things you guys do on a daily basis. Since the day he came to work with us, John Sanchez has been telling us what a great crew he has. And again, we're very, I'm very fortunate to be in a position to see all the great things that you guys do on a daily basis, and it's great to have an opportunity to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Paul.
So now, I guess I'm the last one. So, I really can't say anything else. I mean, these guys are really, you know, giving you a great hand on what you do and stuff, but for me personally, being out of the limelight the way you are, you drive around town and people don't even realize everything you do every single day. And then when there's an emergency with the snow, like they've said, or the rain, or the Christmas Eve, or New Year's, whatever it is, you may have a child's birthday, you got to go in and work, when meanwhile your kid's birthday party, you got to miss it. There's a bunch of stuff that goes along with this job that people in the public don't understand. The big thing for me is the fact that we hired Mr. Sanchez, who's done a great job, but he's the one that has hired you people, and he's done a great job at hiring for this town of Burlington, along with all the other departments in town. Paul, Mr. Sagarino, has worked with Mr. Sanchez to get everybody on board. So, I just want to thank these two guys, and I want to thank you guys for the job you do that is totally unheard of all day long. The only time we see it is when something goes wrong, and then it's all over the social internet. Why'd they do this? Why did they? But everything works out fine because of the great job you people do. I just want to say thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one, one quick thing, and I want to steal your last word. I just want to correct one thing that was said here tonight, that there is no TV program that's been made about DPW. Amy Poehler is working on one for you for public works.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Just the chair. Oh, just me? Just you, yeah.
Three, two, one. Mr. Sanchez's.
Don't tell them. It's perfect.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, Luke, how's it going down there?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The next to the tallest guy.
Okay. Where are we? Sculpture Park, 104.
Mr. Chairman, we have a request from Jonathan Sacks, who's in charge of the town Sculpture Park Committee, and they're looking to, for you to appoint a representative from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, thank you. I believe we've already talked about this a little bit. We've talked to Mr. Priest about being on that committee. He said he would like to be on that committee or would accept that appointment, so.
I make a motion.
Okay.
Again, they're also eager.
Any discussion?
Are there any more committees we don't want? No, I'm sorry, shouldn't say that. Just don't have the time for it.
All right, so we'll take that as a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion anybody wants?
It's actually a pretty good endeavor. John, John Sacks worked very, very, very hard on these types of things. He's very involved with the Mary Cummings property. He's, he's approached us one or two times in the past regarding this, and I think it's a great idea. Nick, thank you for being part of that committee.
I also want to thank Nick, because I originally told Mr. Sacks I'd be on the committee, but just, I just don't have enough time to commit to that committee. It sounds like a great idea. I, I think it's a, be a very nice thing for the town, and I wish all good luck with it, but I just, I would love to see this thing happen, and, you know, you know, for the town. We need something cultural to add to our town.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I just want to say that I'm, I'm also enthused, to be honest. I know that we all joke about it, but Mr. Sacks has done a great job, as we've said, against all together, and I think that he's, he's pulling the right people together. He's got someone from Planning Board, he's got someone from Parks Recreation, so he's, he's cultivating, I think, the right group of folks to have the conversations needed early, so that we can, we can see, hopefully, something happen.
Paul?
No, I'm good. I, I, you know, I've said in the past, I think it's a good endeavor. I think Nick's enthusiasm to volunteer certainly speaks to the direction, hopefully, that he will take us as, you know, as we go along, so bring all that information back to us so we can make the right decisions.
Yes, thank you very much for jumping on our committee. I've already voiced my concerns of what I, what I would like to see. I think, I think it would be great, so just get back to us and we'll go from there. So, thank you very much for that.
Yep, we're meeting tomorrow, tomorrow morning is our first meeting, 8:00 AM, in the town annex, in case anyone is listening and interested in joining.
Thank you. Moving along, 105, we have an update. Mr. Sagarino.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have a couple of members of the Scholarship Fund Committee here. As the board knows, we revamped the Scholarship Fund Program over this past year, and we gave a new committee a very short timeframe in order to get, get, get a program into place. So, I'd like to thank, tonight we have Gina Larry and Bill Boyven here from the Scholarship Committee. If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to mention the other members, Sheila Fitzpatrick, Jennifer Kossis, Rosalyn Missangan and Kent Moffett. But these folks are here to provide us with an update of where they, where they are to date and what they've accomplished since you guys appointed the, the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Your question.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Well, we received 57 applications, and we were able to select two recipients for a $5,000 scholarship apiece, and we'll be announcing the recipients at the High School Awards Night on May 30th. On behalf of the committee, we'd like to thank you all for your support. We were very green when we started in January, and we had until probably a couple of weeks ago to make the decision on who we were going to select. We revamped the application process. We personally read all 57 essays. Some of us read them multiple times, and we're confident in our decision. Our two recipients are very well-accomplished, very well-deserving, but we couldn't have done it without your support, and especially Paul, he's our go-to man for our questions. We ask him all, all the town bylaw questions, and Amy Warfield has been great as well, so thank you all.
I think these guys are being a little bit modest. They actually met every week for, from, from the time they started. I really, they had a really heavy workload to get, to get this thing up to speed. They were starting from scratch, so I just wanted to point out the amount of effort that the committee had to put in as opposed, you know, a lot of committees you meet once a month, but I think these guys were meeting very, very regularly in order to meet this deadline. So, I just wanted to thank them and draw the board's attention to that.
Thank you.
If I could, if I could point out a couple of things here, I would just like to say, first of all, Joe Outobato was representing the high school guidance department and helping us, and he was instrumental in receiving all of the applications, blinding all of them, marking out any identifying information, so when we went through them all, we had no idea who they were, and we still don't know who they are. We just know that number X and Y receive the recipients, and we'll find out on the award night as well. And we did get applications from five different high schools. So, that was good, because it was open to any Burlington resident who was a senior in a high school. So, we got applications from Arlington Catholic, BBNN, Austin Prep and Sharshene Tech, as well as Burlington High School.
Good for them.
So, that's, that I just wanted to put out there as well. We really wanted to make sure that other, you know, Burlington residents whose kids didn't happen to go to Burlington High School knew they were eligible. So, our goal for the next round is to advertise more to make sure that applicants know they're eligible, and then try to advertise more so that people know that they can donate either, either through the checkbox on the town real estate tax and excise tax, or they, they can just write a check to the Town of Burlington Scholarship Fund as well. So, we'll try to get some more information out there and get a little more energy, maybe have more money to give away next year, so.
What's on the agenda for fall?
For the next meeting, right. So, that's where we're standing.
Thank you. Paul, yes?
Very quickly, the Reader's Digest version of what were you looking for when you went through all the applications?
We had a, we had, we were lucky to have two educators on the board with us, on the committee with us. So, they were very proficient in setting up rubrics. They had a lot of knowledge of how to look at essays and what to look for. So, we looked at four years of the students' transcripts. We looked at their essay was heavily weighted, probably the most heavily weighted, and we asked them to answer the question, or to describe an event, I should say, that influenced them or made an impact on their lives. We had a lot of really, really good essays, and I'm drawing a blank on what else we have. Activities, volunteerism, scores.
We did not include financial need. We did not include SAT scores.
Right.
So, it was all the school activities, outside school activities, recommendations from someone who was influential in their personal success, and the, counting twice as much was the student essay itself, right? And the rubric, I'd never heard the term before we went through this process, it's a scoring sheet that you each fill out, and each item has its weight, and you can give it two, four, six, eight points, and each one of those is described, and to get four points, it must meet these criteria. To get six points, and then there was like five different things we were rating. So, we all rated, we, what we did was we shuffle and dealt, there was five of us doing the rating, so we had 57, and it would've been too much to ask everybody to do all 57. So, what we did was we passed them out so that each pers, each application was rated by two people.
Right.
And then we took the top scores, which was more than two people, and those, we then had everybody read and re-score. And then of those, two emerged as the, as the winner. So, it was actually less rounds than we thought. We thought we'd have tie after tie after tie, maybe, and have to really have some more debate, but it worked out quite well, the process that we had. And we've already come up with a, a comments on how to improve the system for next year, and they will try to work into the, the scoring rubric and stuff like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a testament to the, to the Burlington schools, these, these, these kids, but they're almost adults at this point, they're seniors, but they're so well-rounded, excellent grades, great essays, they volunteer, some of them, you know, over 100 hours every year, not required by anyone. They just, they just do it, and they, you know, they play sports, they work jobs. A lot of really well-rounded, well-rounded students that we have in Burlington. I wish we had more money to give to more people.
Exactly. Well, that's one of our goals, is to get more money.
Yeah.
And some of the essays, I mean, some of them are what you'd expect, but some of the essays were from the heart, and literally brought tears to you when you read them. I mean, it was really touching how much they put into their, into their essays. So, it was, it was a difficult process ultimately to rate it all, but it worked out.
Jim?
I just want to thank you, because it sounds like it's a lot of work.
It was, yeah.
And you do realize if you advertise it a lot, you'll be reading more than 57 essays.
Yes, that's the goal.
That's okay.
But we'll have more time than we had, like a four-month crash course last year.
But the way you explain the rubic and, the rubric and the not knowing who the student is, I think that's fantastic. And I think not including the, the financial need is, is, is good, because you, you have a, it's like a blank slate, and you're just doing your job, and, and that's it. And thank you for doing that job, because it sounds daunting.
Michael?
No, good, no, thank you. Nicely done, well done. First year out, I know it's, it's not easy. Your, your marketing actually strategy, if you learn anything new, you can share with the Fourth of July Committee, we'd love to hear.
Okay.
Give away $5,000.
I know, it helps you. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you.
Yeah, again, I just want to say thank you. I know you and I have spoken beforehand, and I'd also spoken with Ross Lomnassian, and so I know that, you know, the, the timeframe that your committee was under was obviously not ideal, and so I thank all of you, and obviously, Mr. Outobato, and everyone involved, for dedicating themselves to this. You know, it's, it's only when we have limited times on our hands that we, we have to throw procrastination and all, you know, wonderful shiny things out the window, and just focus on getting it done and done in the best way possible, and your committee has shown us how to do exactly that, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Priest, anything else? Oh, yeah, Mr. Priest. Mr. Sagarino.
Just wanted to say thank you again, and maybe perhaps in September, once we go through the full cycle, maybe we can update town meeting a little bit with everything that's going on. I think that would be great if you guys be willing to do that.
Sure.
So, I'd just like to say thank you for the time and effort you put into this. I know it's a brand-new scholarship in town, been going on for years, but the way it was separated up, it's new to us. I think you did a great job. They basically said everything I could probably say. I could put it in different terms, and we could sit here longer, but I won't, so I just want to say thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, next on the agenda is 106, appointment for zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will be recusing myself from this agenda item.
Would you like to stay here?
Oh, no, I'll step.
Step out. Okay, so we have an applicant, we put it out, Betty, right? Okay, Paul, would you like to go from there, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one, Betty put an ad in, and we have one applicant for the position. So, it's up to the boards to make the appointments as to who they want for it. Just one, one applicant, Adam Tiggers.
Thank you. I don't like to start, I like to start on either end and work my way back and forth, but this particular one, I'm going to start. I had a conversation with Mr. Tiggers. He is the only one that put in for an application on this. We talked a little bit in length the other day on the phone of what it includes and what it doesn't include. He's been a town meeting member for how many years?
Just got re-elected, it's my second term, so just starting a fourth.
Second term, okay, so second term. So, my personal opinion, and whether he was or he wasn't the only one that put in, I would like to make an appointment for Adam Tiggers to be on the zoning Board of Appeals. So, before we get to you, I would like to go to the side here. Bob, would you?
No, I absolutely agree. In addition to just being on town meeting, he's also on which committees?
Currently, I chair the Bylaw Review Committee.
Okay. So, and I've known him to be very active and very concerned, and he has a good education, so I am all in support of that comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mike?
No, we all known Adam, he's a young man. We'd like to, we'd like to have this, this next generation of policymakers on board, so I certainly look forward to seeing Adam on the Board of Appeals. Would you refresh my memory, however, is this a?
This is a.
Alternate position.
This is an alternate position. This is an alternate position, yes.
And that was due to?
Retirement, we'll call it, oh.
No, to the planning board.
Oh, that's right, my go-to planning, that's what it was, that's what it was.
That's retirement, you're retired to a bigger board. I'll make it my way.
All right, thank you. A lot on my mind these days, so, okay, good, that's what I needed to know.
Mr. Priest?
Yeah, I, you know, Adam, obviously you and I have had the chance to chat many a time over the past couple of years, and you're obviously a highly qualified candidate for the position, and I have no qualms about, you know, having you join the Board of Appeals. I will say, just to the, to the body at large and to anyone watching, the fact that we had one applicant for this, you know, troubles me, and I think it troubles all of us. I think we've all had this conversation before, and I, you know, I think that we need to be finding ways to engage with the rest of the community to, to have a larger pool of applicants. You know, I think without a doubt Adam's absolutely qualified, and, you know, I'm, I'm with you, you know, but the fact that it was just one, I mean, that's, that's one away from having nobody, you know, that's, I mean.
That's a good, that's a good point. Joe, Joe and I, we did, we received a dozen or so.
A lot still.
Applications a year and a half or so ago when we had these appointments, and wonderful, wonderful qualified candidates made it our, our decision, it was very difficult, so curious that, that just the one that's, that's.
Well, it's not through, sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's not through a lack of trying, right? We post on Facebook, we post in the news, and I mean, you know, BCA, you know, posted, so I mean, it's out there. You know, I, I honestly wonder if it's a, a personal concern of people, they, they worry about time commitment, and so I wonder if as we start posting these, at least as an initial effort, we start explaining rough time commitments for, for board seats, maybe folks will understand that if it's a, you know, once a week, or once every other week, or whatever it might be, they may, you know, realize it may be in their schedule to, you know, throw their hat in the ring. I don't think that they understand the, the scope of what they might be getting involved in.
Well, it's, it's, it's amazing there's only one filled in. Adam is a great person to be in that position, but the one, Mike and myself did it last time, there was like 12. Mrs. Bayo got on the planning board this last election season, but we skipped over him twice.
Sure.
Right? We skipped over, we skipped over a few people to get to who we think is to be in that position.
How many people off that list have made it to the Board of Appeals recently? There was a couple, weren't there?
Um, yeah. Five, maybe five, maybe five off that list, right?
So, that was a good list.
It was a very good list, yeah. So, without further ado, we could talk about it all night long. I guess, Adam, would you like to say anything at all before we, you're sitting there looking at us like, so am I on yet or not?
No, I appreciate what you guys have said. I definitely took time to fill out the application to best explain the experience I have, both with town government and also just working as a, you know, in the private sector. And I'm eager to start. I've been following some of the recent, you know, meetings and agendas to kind of get myself prepared. So, again, thank you for the words that you've said, I appreciate it.
Okay, great. So, on that, do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that. Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve Adam Tiggers to fill the vacancy as first officer on the Board of Appeals.
Motion by Mike, second by?
Second.
Mr. Priest, so all those in favor? Aye. All those abstain? Against? Nothing? So, it's four, zero, zero.
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one. I got that in there.
He's not here.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So, we're all set, congratulations.
Thank you. I'll see you at town meeting.
Yes, you're over town meeting, very charming.
him twice.
Sure.
Right, we skipped over, we skipped over a few people to get to who we think is to be in that position.
How many people off that list have made it to the Board of Appeals recently? There was a couple, weren't there?
Um, okay.
Yeah.
Five, maybe five off that list, right?
So that was a good list.
It was a very good list.
And then some other ones dropped off, they were...
Yeah. So without further ado, we could talk about it all night long. I guess, Adam, would you like to say anything at all before we, you're sitting there looking at us like, so am I on yet or not?
No, I appreciate what you guys have said. I definitely took time to fill out the application to best explain the experience I have, both with town government and also just working as a, you know, in the private sector. And I'm eager to start. I've been following some of the recent, you know, meetings and agendas to kind of get myself prepared. So again, thank you for the words that you've said, I appreciate it.
Okay, great. So on that, do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that, Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve Adam Tiggers to fill the vacancy as first alderman on the Board of Appeals.
Motion by Mike, second by?
Second.
Mr. Priest, so all those in favor? Aye. All those abstain? Against? Nothing? So it's four, zero, zero.
Four, zero, one.
Zero, zero, one. I got that in there.
He's not here.
Oh, that's right. Full acquittal. Congratulations.
So we're all set, congratulations.
Thank you. I'll see you at town meeting.
Yes, you over at town meeting, very solid.
You'll be there tomorrow night?
Oh, probably. Thank you. Make sure you go up and get sworn in.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, one oh seven, final review and approvals.
I don't think we have any, Mr. Chairman, I think that has all been taken care of to date.
Okay, fantastic. So now we'll, we're going to do the one awake approval of minutes. We're going to take them individually because there's two that are going to be postponed. So can I get a motion on April eighth, nineteenth, regular session? Approve the minutes?
So made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
April eighteenth is going to be postponed, April twenty-second, regular session. I need approval on that one.
So made.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
May sixth is postponed also, so I'll skip right over that one. May thirteenth, regular session. Do we have a motion on that?
Motion.
Motion is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to go to the subcommittee reports. Anybody, oh, is that, Nick?
Sure, yeah, I actually had the opportunity to sit down with Mrs. Madigan this morning in the selectman's office. She handles and coordinates everything for Grandview Farms. And her and I sat down and she clued me in on everything that's going on. Her and I are the subcommittee for that. And I just want to say that she's doing a fantastic job, as well as our maintenance custodial staff in running that. And it is pretty much booked for the next year. It's doing a great job. It's actually, it's pulling in more and more increasing revenue year after year, which is fantastic. And it's, I wouldn't call it a hidden gem of Burlington because it's right in the center of our town, but I think it's a, it's a location that the people of Burlington, if you have an event and, you know, you want to host it, which other than your living room, you know, there are reduced rates for residents and it's a, it's a great place and there are three locations you can rent out. And, you know, I highly recommend if you want to do that, call now in advance because we really are booked up for the next year. But we agree to meet on a quarterly basis unless something comes up. But yeah, she's doing a fantastic job.
Excellent. Thank you. Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I know we have a little ahead of schedule, so I have ample time to go on and on and on at Minassian over this affordable housing, which is, you all know, I really kind of near and dear to my heart, but we have a, we really have a really unique opportunity here coming up. On Corporate Drive, we've negotiated sixty-eight affordable luxury rental units, one, two, and three-bedroom units that will be available in the fall. They're going to be offered to Burlington residents in the first round on a lottery basis. And I really think that this could be an ideal situation for certain segment of our population, particularly our folks who are on fixed incomes. The beauty of these affordable units is that there is no asset limitations. There's income, there are income guidelines that you have to meet, but there are no asset limitations on these units. So you can, you can sell that house that you own, we all know that you're going to, you're looking at at least four hundred thousand dollars here in Burlington. Someone who might be struggling here in town to meet their obligations on a month-to-month-to-month basis, this would be a great opportunity for them to consider maybe selling that house that they've maintained for the last forty, fifty, sixty years and capitalizing on the equity that they've earned in that home and not be penalized for it, for these units here. You can, you can put the money in the bank, you can put it under your mattress, you can do whatever you want with it, okay? If you put it in the bank and you're earning a few dollars interest on it, then that will be included in your income. But otherwise, there are no, no asset limitations on these units. I think it's a great opportunity for certain people in Burlington. Now, when I, when I tell people what the affordable numbers are, the rents, monthly rents, people, people tend to get a little anxious. It sounds like a lot of money to them. They don't, you know, they remember paying sixteen or eighteen or twenty thousand dollars for their, their house fifty years ago, but the rents really are really pretty reasonable for this area. One, I'm sorry, bear with me, one-bedroom apartments are going to be renting at about fourteen hundred dollars a month, two-bedrooms, sixteen hundred dollars a month, and the three-bedroom units at seventeen hundred ninety-two dollars per month. Now, if you think about it, your, your monthly expenses today with your real estate taxes, insurance, maintenance, whatever else goes along with owning and maintaining a home are probably equal to what we're looking at here in, in the monthly rents on these sixty-eight affordable units. So I would, I would urge people to give it some serious consideration. If you're one of those folks who are, who are struggling to make ends meet on a monthly basis, this might be something for you to consider. We're having a public information session this Wednesday night at six o'clock at Town Hall, main hearing from Town Hall. Representatives from Davis Company will be there. I don't know if Kim Doughty plans on being there or not, but I think it's a very good opportunity for, you know, certain, certain individuals in town. And with this number of units, sixty-eight units available, with Burlington residents getting preference in that first round, I think the chances would be pretty good for some folks. So if you've been thinking about it, now's the time to do it. Come to the information session on Wednesday, six o'clock, Town Hall, second floor. Thank you. And I'm sorry to go on at length.
That's why we're here, Michael. That's why we're here. James?
Oh, actually, Mike, I don't mind when we hear good news like that, you can talk all night, so. And also, Nick, just to follow up what you said about Grandview, I've talked to a few people who've been there for events and nothing but praise. It's the facility, you know, Sandy and Jean organizing it, it's, I've heard nothing negative, let's put it that way. Nothing too much on my subcommittee reports because there was no activity other than the small cells, which we're talking about later. But I did attend the community health fair yesterday here at the high school. Very well-organized, very well-attended, a lot of, I don't want to call them vendors, but a lot of agencies available, a lot of giveaways, and it was just a very nice, very nice day altogether. I was down at the gym and, you know, a very, very good event.
Paul? Just wanted to take a moment to send condolences out to a couple of families that lost loved ones in town. Most people know already that former fire chief Herb Crawford passed away recently, thirty years as the chief and was the guy who kind of gave that position in that department its foundation. Guy with great stories and nice to just sit and talk to, so condolences to his family. Former selectman Gary G. Anino's mother passed away, we send our condolences to Gary and his family. And someone who was a wonderful woman and a great neighbor, but not a lot of people know who she is. So I just want to say that June Ryan, a neighbor of ours, passed away recently, so she's going to be missed also.
Thank you. My subcommittees, there's really nothing except for the water. Don't forget that the water is back on again, it's odd-even every other day type of thing. That's all I have for subcommittee reports. Do you have anything at all to, well, I'm going to do the chairman's report, was anything on the subcommittees? Nothing? And then we'll do town administrator after that. Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
Am I messing it up on you? So the chairman's report. I know we were here last week because we had town meeting, we're back here again this week for town meeting, but my report really isn't, it's not a really report. I missed a week, a lot of you know that I was, I was away for one week. I had some personal things that happened to me. I personally want to thank the Burlington Fire Department, the Burlington Police Department for their response time to come to my house and pick me up and get me to Lady Clinic. There's a possibility that I, they were very, very good, I'm not going to get into it any more than that. I cannot thank those guys enough. Mike, I'm sure that you know the shift that it was, I don't particularly remember the shift, but on a personal level, I just want to say thank you to all those guys out there, it was outstanding. And I can bang that gavel again when the time comes. So that's all I'm going to say. So we'll go right to the administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a couple of things related to Veterans, Veterans Memorial Day holiday this weekend. The Veteran Services Department on Wednesday, they're looking for volunteers to put flags on all the veterans' graves. It starts at three-thirty at Chestnut Hill Cemetery and then they move over to the Pine Haven. So anybody that wants to assist with that can just show up and they'll be greatly appreciated. Next is on Sunday, we have the bridge dedication ceremony to Lance Corporal Greg McDonald, who passed away defending our country in Iraq. And that's at one o'clock on Sunday over here on the Common, a ceremony to acknowledge that. And then, of course, on Monday, we have the town's great Memorial Day acknowledgements. At eight AM, there's a flag raising on the Common, that's a pretty quick, quick ceremony, followed by the actual ceremony at Chestnut Hill Cemetery at ten AM. And twenty-four hours before, if there's a rain issue, they'll make the call to hold the ceremony within the Burlington High Wooden Gym. So that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Old business, new business, do we have anybody? No. Citizens Time, anybody out there? No one's here.
Mr. Chairman, could I, since we do have just a couple of minutes, if I could just add to Paul's comments about the, actually, it's the naming of the bridge on the section of Route one-twenty-eight that goes over Cambridge Street to Greg McDonald. The ceremony's going to be on the Common, but a couple of members of the DPW will be on one-twenty-eight unveiling that as we're having the ceremony on the Town Common. So it would have been inappropriate for us to try to have a ceremony and get people...
Could we possibly pick and choose who we put up on the highway?
So I just wanted to point out that it's, it's because we are dedicating, and State Rep. Ken Gordon kind of made this happen. So that section of the bridge will be forever known as the Lance Corporal Gregory McDonald Bridge here in town. But the ceremony itself is one o'clock on Sunday on the Town Common.
Thank you. Not on the bridge. I'm going to look, see how town was here, I made that comment, she just went like this and like, I guess like, sorry.
We should DPW.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So on that note, do you have anything for us? No? Okay. On that note, do I have a motion? Motion adjourned. Do I have a second?
Second.[1783.83]